I'd like to call this meeting of the Charlotte County Planning and Zoning Advisory Board to order. If the Secretary would please call the roll.
Michael Gravinson.
Here.
Paul Bigness.
Here.
Stephen Viera.
Here.
Don McCormick.
Here.
Clint Baker.
Everybody is here, so we have a quorum. The minutes for the May 9th meeting were circulated. Any corrections, additions, or comments?
Would move their approval.
Okay. Without objection, we'll move those as approved. Any announcements from the staff?
No, sir, not at this time, thank you.
A lot of our petitions are quasi-judicial, which requires expert testimony, and if you're going to be speaking, you need to rise and take the oath. So we do that at the beginning to try to just speed things along. So anybody that's going to be talking today, it's safe just to rise and take the oath from the Secretary.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please say I do. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to remind everybody to silence their cell phones so they don't go off during the middle of the presentations. Mr. Cullen, onto item number one, please.
Thank you, Sean Cullen, planning zoning official. I have been sworn. We have a very busy agenda today, so I will try to be as expeditious and efficient as possible. The first item is a preliminary plat request for Tucker's Developers LLC. This is Phase 1 for Tucker's Point, a 354-lot residential subdivision with the supporting infrastructure and future development tracks. This is located on approximately 505 acres. This property is located north of Tucker's Grade, east of 41, west of I-75, and this is in the South County area. Closer in aerial, here's the location map. The portion below that's carved out, that is for future commercial development. So this area outlined in yellow is the development at hand here. This is a 1,000-foot buffer notification map. Future land use map designation is a mixture of low-density residential and preservation, and the zoning designation is planned development. Here are the proposed changes, and those proposed changes overlaid onto the aerial. Staff finds that this meets all the standards and requirements of the land development regulations and the comprehensive plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is present as well.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff?
No.
Then we'll hear from the applicant's representative.
For the record, Carl Baracco Jr. with Baracco &amp; Associates. We represent the applicant for Tucker's Point. We do agree with staff's recommendation for approval, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. So if there's no questions from the board, we'll open the public comment. Anyone wishing to speak about this petition, please come forward.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
Have a motion, second to close public comment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public comment time is closed. Okay, any comments on this petition?
No.
Look for a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Make a motion to forward application PP-22-02-05. The Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation of approval based on the finding and analysis in the staff memo dated May 25, 2022, Charlotte County's comprehensive plan, and the evidence and testimony presented at the public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Board this date.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any negative, motion carries. Next item, please, Sean.
Thank you, Sean Cullen, planning zoning official. I have been sworn. This next item is also a preliminary plat request from Babcock Ranch Community Independent Special District and the Babcock Neighborhood School. This is a preliminary plat for subdivision to be named Babcock Ranch Community Neighborhood School, containing 20 tracks for infrastructure and future development on approximately 67 acres. This is located within the Babcock Ranch DRI. As you're aware from the numerous Babcock petitions we have had over the years, Babcock is large acreage. It had been agricultural land. As they are going in and developing, they are plating these into the future development tracks, and this is one of those tracks. Here is the full-range aerial, the mid-range. See the neighborhood school here? This is the boundaries of the tract. This is the 1,000-foot buffer notification map. Future land use map designation is Babcock Mixed Use, and the zoning designation is Babcock Overlay Zoning District. Here are the proposed changes. As you can see, just plating tracks. And here are those proposed changes overlaid onto the aerial. Staff finds that this meets the standards and requirements of the land development regulations and the development order and comprehensive plan. Be happy to answer any questions, and as with the previous one, which I neglected to mention, there are a few conditions that will need to be satisfied prior to final approval or final plotting. Thank you.
Any questions for staff?
I do have one question. I know that the county is required, under the development plan, to, once Babcock reaches certain thresholds, to agree to develop certain areas. Is this part of that conditioning, or is this separate from anything the county's required to do?
No, this is not any of the required portions of it. This is just taking some of the tracks. Some will be future development, some will be future stormwater. The fieldhouse, which is a part of the school, that may also contain the regional evacuation shelter, that's included in one of these areas. Again, as you can see, it goes from raw land like it is here. As they develop and move out into the tracks that they're going to be, they're plating that out, so it's a truly platted subdivision and not just meets and bounds descriptions and large, huge tracts of land.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Burnson.
Good afternoon. Rob Burnson, Big W Law, here on behalf of the applicant. We accept Mr. Cullen as an expert and accept the conditions. We know there's been some local interest in this plat. It's raised, I guess, the rumor mill out in the community. This is just a plat. This is just dividing land. It's not approving any particular development on any piece of property, and so we're trying to make that clear. The fieldhouse actually was constructed by the ISD and is owned by the ISD, not the school. And, you know, there may be questions that come up to, that we can respond to, but this is just cutting up property. The name of the plat does not imply that the school owns all the property within the plat. It was just the name of a plat as opposed to DD 11 and others that you've seen come before you. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions, and we respectfully request your approval.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Burnson?
No.
No? Okay. So we'll open the public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Lynette Hank. I live in Babcock Ranch. I live on Timberline Parkway, so if you look at that map, you can see it's directly behind this red area here, and it's not correctly being shown. Behind my home is a lake, which you don't even see on here. There are some questions on when the ISD had the property, that there weren't going to be any way to have a pathway in this narrow part of land between, like, let's say, homes on Timberline and Corkwood Bend and the lake. That seems to all be in question because they seem to want that land now, and, you know, they can say the rumor mill or whatever, but the bottom line is our homes are right there. The information that is given is not correct. There is a lake there, and I'd be glad to show you a picture of my backyard to prove it.
Sean?
Yes, that's why this is being platted out. As you can see, there may be a trail system that goes through. That is all part of the master development plan.
Behind, 10 feet behind our house in the lake? Between the lake and my house? There's going to be a trail system?
There's a possibility.
Where?
That property is owned by Babcock Ranch, and they have that right to develop that trail system.
So they're going to...
Babcock Ranch has a large interconnected trail system with many of the pathways and trail systems going between properties and water bodies, properties and forested areas.
Okay, I would say you need to look at the property because what you're talking about is a trail behind that, significantly behind the lake. I'm saying that they've changed, they've made changes. There's a road there now. There is a lake right behind my house. I'm saying they've made changes that are not reflected on your paperwork. Okay, when I called the county, they had to go up and look at the information because it didn't even show it was there, and I kept insisting there was a lake and that I could send photos of said lake. So I think that there's some questions, and by, is there a concern that by naming this entire tract of land, the new fieldhouse that they're saying is for the school, that is really supposed to be for residents in the event of a storm? Is that really, if you make it all part of the school, then does it mean that everyone else isn't allowed to use it? Because what they're talking about is additional amenities that are going to be available to Babcock Ranch. But if you make that part of the school, you could say due to liability issues, people that don't go to the school can't use that. People that homeschool their children can't use that. People that choose to use another Charlotte County school in the school district instead of the charter school can't have access. So simply changing a name is kind of an issue because it opens it up to things, and that's what I'm saying. I question that. I was here for Hurricane Charlie. I was here when lots of things happened after Hurricane Charlie. I became very aware when minor little changes were being made, that down the road, they were going to make stuff happen. So I plan to live in Babcock Ranch for the rest of my life. I have a disabled son who lives there. We love the area. We're not complaining about the school. We are simply questioning this exactly, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move to close the comment.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to close public comment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public comment time is closed. Mr. Burnson.
Rob Burnson, again. I'm sorry, neglected to welcome you to the board. You'll be seeing a lot of me. So just to try and reiterate what we anticipated the concern would be. The name of the plat is the Babcock Neighborhood School plat. The school does not own all the land in the plat. The school will own certain parcels within the plat. There is a lake behind this lady's house. It is tract D-101, and D-101 means Drainage 101. It is a tract that's owned, will be owned by the ISD, which is, the ISD owns, lakes are all public lakes, they're not private lakes, and the ISD has adopted fishing and lake guidelines governing public fishing on the ISD lakes, which might be subject to change at a public hearing of the ISD. So the shelter is owned by the ISD, not the school. They can enter into a lease agreement or other arrangement. But again, this is a plat. It's simply creating parcels of land. It's not authorizing any development of any kind. So I hope that resolves any issues you may have.
Do you, where exactly is the lake? I don't see a lake. I've got...
These are old aerials.
These are 2020 aerials. That's why this shape is a lake, just like you can see.
So it is right there behind...
Yes, that lake has...
That is a lake.
That is a lake now.
Yeah. These are just old aerials. We hope to have new ones, and I believe by 2023 are the next round of aerials.
You can see all of those various shapes that are in there. Those were all upland at one point, and the lakes were dug to create fill for their surrounding development. If we had Google Earth today, you would see that there is a lake within D-101 on the plat.
So can I ask, just for clarification, is that lake located to the north of Corkwood Bend Trail?
Yes.
Is that where it is? That's the lake?
It's the southernmost...
Portion.
Oblong.
And that's in existence today?
Right. But it's part of a large piece of tract right now. All of this is one large tract, and now this is just cutting it up into the pieces.
Mm-hmm.
Well, how many acres do you think it approximately is? Just to give a reference, I...
I don't...
But if it was dug, it's a man-made lake.
Yes, yes, they're all men.
So it's not going to be that large, but, all right.
I would estimate probably about 5 to 10 acres.
5 to 10 acres? Okay.
I think we're all in agreement that there has been a lake constructed there as of this time. That is all part of the infrastructure as was necessary.
Thank you.
The entire subdivision is 67 acres, so I don't think it would be much more than 10 or 15, actually.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Burnson?
No.
Okay. Public comment time is closed. Discussion. Do you have any discussion?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion, if I could, please. I'd like to forward the application PP-22-02-06 to the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation of approval based on the findings and analysis in the staff memo dated June 1, 2022, Charlotte County's comprehensive plan and the evidence and testimony presented at the public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Board.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
All second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to the motion, say nay. And that carries to the BCC.
The next item is another preliminary plat. This is for Lennar Homes LLC. This is preliminary plat approval for a residential subdivision to be named Lake Emily. This will include 171 lots and seven tracks on approximately 160, excuse me, 176 acres. This is located southeast of San Casa, west of Winchester Boulevard, in the Inwood area. You may remember this, it had been platted a number of years ago into larger tracks. Here is the 2021 Google Earth image. So you can see it was a large mining operation. This is the full-range aerial. You can see this is another subdivision nearby, mid-range, and the aerial location map. This is the 1,000-foot buffer notification map, future land use map designation of low-density residential, and a zoning designation of RE1. Here are the proposed changes, and those proposed changes overlaid onto the aerial. And with that, staff finds that this meets all the standards and requirements of the land development regulations and the comprehensive plan, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman, real quick.
Yes.
There were a couple of things in the replies from the county, various departments. Are those, any of those conditions?
Yes, sir, those would also be. Typically, if I just say staff finds it meets it, it's implied that it's with those proposed conditions because there are always items that need to be addressed before going to MYLAR and going to final plat.
Okay. Are they enumerated like we normally see, or are we just going to say what those?
Typically, we move it forward. There's comments from the county surveyor, E-911, real estate, and addressing. Typically, it's just that this has to have the proper names approved and put onto the plat. Again, the purpose of the preliminary plat is more to just give what it's going to look like. The actual final documents for conveyance purposes are the final plat. That's where you have all your curb data, as you have essentially everything that you need to finally formally cut that land into sellable pieces.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Burnson.
Good afternoon again. Rob Burnson here on behalf of Lennar Homes. This is the point in your career when you start to realize we aren't having a lot of land still available for development, because I've been working on this site since roughly 1992 for various approvals over the years, and finally, we're getting to a point that it looks like it's going to come to fruition. A bunch of the other ideas have come and gone over the years, but Lennar is working to bring a residential community to this site. This was the former excavation that Jimmy Philman operated for many years. There was an air curtain incinerator there for a number of years as well, and now with the lake completed, Lennar is looking to complete the subdivision and come in for final plat. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Burnson?
I have a quick one. Typically, with your mine excavations, there are bank, you know, the riverbanks and so forth have to meet certain slopes and all that. I assume all that's correct.
Yep, that's all taken into account.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll open up public comment time then. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
My name is David Brooks. I live at 8180, which is lot number three off of Casa de Meadows, which is an easement that was issued in 1981 for the original owner of the property back there because Winchester Boulevard was not extended down all the way to Placida. And I bought my house there nine years ago, and no one has ever done anything there, except when Mr. Kokamore bought the property and he started his business in there. People used to drive down because it's level. I would see people down there. They'd drive down in their pickup trucks and everything, and there'd be nobody there. I'd get down there and wait. This happened to me four or five times, and they were climbing over the fence that's there. There's a chain-linked fence with a gate and everything there. And I called Mr. Kokamore, and he had him build up some piles of dirt on the other side so people couldn't see. And my lawyer recommended that I put, you know, personal property, no trespassing, because the people that went down there told me they thought it was a public access way. So now, what I don't know is Mr. Kokamore has the right to, he's the grantee. I'm the grantor, I guess, you know, at this point, because I own it. And one of the plans that was sent to me was about 16 pages long, and it shows an emergency access road 20 feet wide running through to my easement, but I don't see it on this. Is this something that can, is there any reason, or, you know, has something changed, or what's happening here? Because nobody has talked to me about doing anything that at least they would talk to me and let me know what's happening. There's two of us who own houses that have the easement that has to go through. And right now, one of the things that I was told was that the county might require an emergency access road going in that way. And I don't see the reason for that because Lennar Homes, if they buy this property, they already own the other one, and there's access coming right off of Placida, going right through, and they could put their, they could tie these roads together since they own the properties that match, that go right together. Normally, an easement is made for, you know, putting in underground utilities and electrical and that, not, if there's no reason to have an emergency access or a sidewalk there or anything like that.
Is the easement granted to the county?
No, sir. I can address that if you'd like, or we can wait till the end of public comment. It's up to you.
Go ahead.
Mr. Philman was the original developer of Casa de Meadows as well. He dug this. This was another mining operation. My understanding is that that easement was put in place, as was stated prior to the creation of Winchester Boulevard. Winchester Boulevard had just been platted lots in that area. It never existed as a roadway until about, don't quote me on time, but about six or seven years ago. And so, yes, there was access through that. That is a private agreement between parties. There's only one entrance in here. In the plans, there is a requirement for stabilized surface here for emergency access. That is required so that if something were to happen, there is a secondary means of entrance just for emergency purposes only, not a general gated entrance. With respect to the Island Lake Estates down here, this is a very large slew running through here. While they may own both properties, there would be extensive permitting requirements required in order to actually connect the two properties. They may or may not. There's no requirement that they have to, but as it stands right now, that is a valid easement and may be used by the property owner or such. If they have a disagreement, they would need to speak with their attorneys, unfortunately.
Well, I have spoken with my attorney, and he also wanted me to bring it up today and told me that, you know? Because I haven't heard any, you know, I mean, I would think that we should be able to speak with each other about this rather than just say they want to do this and everything else while at least let me know ahead of time what's happening, and then maybe I can talk with my attorney, or, you know, my attorney would be able to have more. Because I thought three years ago, in the original, I think when Mr. Kokamore, he came, we came down here for another meeting, it was the commissioner meeting at that time, and again, the development showed a emergency or a roadway. I don't remember if it was officially emergency access or not. And, but nothing has ever, ever happened. So, you know, I just would like to know because this, there's a big possibility here of lowering the value of my house and property by a lot, a large, large amount, but I have some alternatives that I would be willing to talk to them about.
Mr. Chairman, I might suggest that the gentleman speak to the applicant's attorney. That would probably be a good way to start the conversation. But as Mr. Cullen said, that easement would not be a subject of this application today. It's not relevant.
Sean, can I ask you a question, please? Could you just define for me what stabilized access is? And I know in the past, we've had similar situations like this where we've had limited access barriers that are installed once a site has been designed. Is that, can you explain that a little bit further?
Correct. Essentially, what will occur is the fire department, whether that be Inwood Fire District, Charlotte County Fire Rescue, they will define what the parameters are. I've seen everything from stabilized grass surface with a gate in the wall and a knockbox. I've also seen it be paved, minimum width for whatever is necessary, or concreted in order to have the ability to have a fire apparatus be able to go in and out there. I've seen it both ways of either stabilized grass, shell, or actually paved surface, but that would come at the final approvals for the site plan.
Thank you.
Would the emergency access, are there county requirements, or is there like, how does it separate from being a public, people using it as a public way and being used only as an emergency?
Good question. Well, I'm going to have to interrupt you because we only allow a member to speak for five minutes. Generally, you make your comments, and we've gotten into some discussions, so I'm going to have to stop you at this point. Your concerns have been registered. You know who the attorney for the applicant is, and I'm sure Mr. Burnson would readily talk with you out in the hallway.
Yeah.
So, is there anyone, thank you.
All right.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak about this petition? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close the public comment.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to close public comment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public comment is closed. Questions time. Sean, is there, he talked about an easement, or, Mr. Burnson, does that easement exist, and is that recorded now?
Yes, sir. Yes, that easement, again, when Mr. Philman created Casa de Meadows, he had put that easement in place along the back of those two lots in order to access that. You can see on this aerial just very faintly, these folks over here actually coming in off of it and into the back of their property. You can see the little dirt pathway from being worn down. That was always the intent. Again, you can see that it is cul-de-sacced here. Typically, you don't put a main entrance into a cul-de-sac like that typically, and again, typically, because this will all come down to final site plan review, as long as it meets the standards of the fire department and zoning and anything else. Typically, these stabilized or emergency access points are gated, again, with a knockbox so that the fire apparatus can get in there in the event of an emergency, and that's typically how it is. Most of these subdivisions are walled, typically have a break in the wall with a gate on it so that you can, those emergency vehicles can go in and out, or, in a true emergency, citizens could too, but it's intended to be a full-use entrance.
Okay. When are these all going? When, are these all going before the BCC?
I believe these are going in July, but I'd have to look up that schedule. I apologize.
Just for the public to know that these all come up before the BCC and their land use hearing in July, so you'll have a second chance to talk to the commissioners.
I just wanted to-
Go ahead.
I just wanted to put on the record, I did give the gentleman my card. Since he is represented by counsel, his attorney will need to contact me.
Okay.
That easement has been in place. It is not intended. Number one, it's not part of the plat because he owns the property that is subject to an easement, so you can't plat over somebody else's property. So that's why it's not shown on the plat. But it, there is discussion that there would be an emergency access. Typically, it's stabilized grass with a gate that allows emergency vehicles to get into, but it's not intended for public access. Had Winchester not been there, that would have been a different story. It may have been the main entrance of that subdivision, but the fact that Winchester is there, San Casa, it's coming up to the curve there, so it's not ideal to have been the main access. So the fact that there is alternative access makes it much safer, but typically, there are more than one access points to a subdivision of this size, just so that emergency vehicles, should there be an accident at the entrance, the main entrance, emergency vehicles could still get in from another secondary location.
I'm sure Lennar Homes, Tom, as big as they are, can make that arrangement with the gentleman to deter public from thinking it's just, let's walk in there. So, a lot of opportunities. I see it looks like there is an entrance, as Sean pointed out, but I'm sure Lennar can accommodate the look there.
Yeah, I think that it will not appear to be a road in any, any way. With that, we'd request your approval, recommendation. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion from the board?
No.
Okay. My, one comment would be that it is a recorded easement, so impact to property values have already been impacted when that easement was recorded. So even if they start to use it, it's been recorded that it's there, so. Okay. We'll entertain a motion then.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. The Charlotte County Planning and Zoning Board makes a motion forward application, PP 220307, to the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation of approval. Based on the findings and analysis in the staff report dated June 1, 2022, Charlotte County's comprehensive plan and the evidence and testimony presented at the public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That goes forward. Next.
Thank you. The next item on your agenda is a legislative item. This is a platification request by Pastor Doyle Developers LLC. They are requesting to plat vacate lots eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen of the KB Harvey Central Edition of Charlotte Harbor and Hickory Bluff in plat book one page seventeen. So as you know, if something is in plat book one, it was turn of the century plating, either just before nineteen hundred or shortly thereafter. This also includes a paper roadway. Here is the aerial location map, mid-range. Here is the, so the unnamed roadway runs right down through that. That's part of it, just, these are two separate tracts of land, and so the lines kind of overlap right there. Again, the location map. This is the one thousand foot buffer notification map. The future land use map designation is a combination of Charlotte Harbor Coastal Residential as well as Charlotte Harbor Mixed Use. And the zoning designations are also coastal, yes, Coastal Residential three point five and Charlotte Harbor Mixed Use. Here are the proposed changes and the results of those. Again, this, this line here, this was a graphical error, will disappear. The intent of this is to do housing. There's a large slew that bisects this piece of property, so they will be utilizing the uplands. With that, staff finds it meets all the standards and requirements. The applicant is here. I believe there were a number of conditions on this one as well, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Then we'll hear from the applicant's representative.
Good afternoon. Jerry Waxler with the McCrory Law Firm, representing Pastor Doyle Developers. In nineteen seventy-two, Harvey's Central Edition to Charlotte Harbor and Hickory Bluff was completely vacated, including, that's why Sean pointed out, there's an error there, including that unnamed road right-of-way, except for eight lots. We are here today to simply vacate those remaining eight lots, so that you will have one clean slate of property upon which to do future development. With that, I would request your approval.
Any questions from the, the board?
No.
No.
Thank you. We'll offer public comment. Anyone wish to speak about this petition, please come forward.
Yes, hello. My name is John Misko. I'm at 23350 Jason Street. The question I have, and it doesn't show on the design, is any type of the waterway that's existing and what the, what you guys are apparently doing with the transfer of water? Because that whole, in that lot space, there's, you know, the canals of water. And I don't see anything on the map that shows what they're doing with that. And are they taking over half of Shady Lane? Are they having people move out of half of Shady Lane, the property?
Would you like me to address it, or wait?
Go ahead and address it.
Okay. No, there's, the yellow line here is the boundaries. It's not touching anything on Shady Lane.
It's showing one side of Shady Lane.
Right, but the boundary stops before you get to Shady Lane. This yellow line is the boundary line of this subject petition. So it's on the other side. This is another paper road called Mills Street coming down this way.
Yeah.
We're not, they are not touching that. All this is doing is erasing these lines here to make it into one big tract of land. All the stormwater, that will come at the time that they move forward with development. As of right now, we're just erasing lines.
So, really, we don't see anything that's being projected to be constructed. So is that coming out anytime soon, or?
If they, they are Coastal Residential three point five. If they choose to move forward with a multifamily development, that would come forward for a rezone. It all depends what the applicant decides to do. Again, this petition is just to erase lines on pieces of paper, very old pieces of paper.
Okay. What else did we have? I think that was it. And it's not going to be anywhere far enough. There's legislation as far as how back, how far back you have to be from the cemetery and the tower. Is that all?
They're not doing anything but erasing some property lines on the plat.
That's all they're doing, for now? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Moving forward.
No. I said a quick question. Could you explain CR three point five to me?
Yes, sir. CR three point five, I apologize, I assume people know these things. That's Coastal Residential. That means, that's a Charlotte Harbor type of use. It's basically similar to residential single-family three point five. It's basically intended to be residential uses at three point five units per acre. So if this, I'm just using round numbers, if this property is a hundred acres, it would have three hundred and fifty units of density.
So no, no, it's not, that would not be high-density apartment buildings?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Now, they could apply for a plan amendment or a rezone, which would be public hearings where if they chose to increase their density. But as of now, it's not.
Any other comments?
I make a motion that we close public hearing.
I have a motion and a second to close public comment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public comment is closed.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question for staff.
Yes.
Is that slew titled? That area is mysterious to me, and-
I believe it is. Oops. This isn't GIS, so I can't scroll up or zoom in like I was trying to do.
Okay.
I believe it is. If I go out a little further, you can see this creek comes up. It kind of branches off right here, again, kind of bisecting the property. I believe it's titled.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from staff, from the board?
I'll ask a question.
Any discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to forward PV dash two-two dash zero-three dash zero-one to the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation of approval, with any conditions attached, based on the findings and analysis in the staff memo dated June 1, 2022, Charlotte County's comprehensive plan and the evidence and testimony presented at the public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Board.
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And that goes forward.
Mr. Chair, just FYI, there, it does say title stream on one of the attachments in there, somewhere in there, so.
Sean, also, on one of those attachments, it says Sarasota County on it.
Yes, sir. We did see that after we'd already published that. Have no idea how that would even pop up, because this just populates from GIS, but we are working. That will be cleaned up before it goes to the BCC. Yeah, we caught that and don't know how it happened, but we'd already published.
Glitch in the matrix.
Yeah. Wasn't eighteen eighty-something plat, so who knows? Maybe-
Sarasota County.
Yeah. Were we De Soto then, or were we Manatee?
Manatee County. Anyways, next item, number five on the agenda, please.
Thank you. Items number five and number six are geographically similar and located not next to each other, but in the same general area. The first petition is a partial plat vacation for Mr. Canfield, James Tyler Canfield. This is a request to vacate a portion of the undeveloped San Carlos Basin, located off of Neptide Drive. The property to be vacated is approximately a tenth of an acre. Here is the Google Earth image, subject property, the aerial location map, and the subject property located on the aerial map. Again, once again, the general location in the Harbor Heights area, the one thousand foot buffer notification map, and here is the future land use map designation of low-density residential with the zoning designation of RSF three point five. As you see, there are, at one of your meetings earlier this year, I believe it was, or very late last year, there was canal vacations just to the north of it. And here are the results of the proposed changes, and those proposed changes overlaid onto the aerial. Staff finds that this meets all the requirements of the land development regulations and the comprehensive plan. This will not deprive any property owners of access to water, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Let me stop just a moment. Can we also do the next item? Because if the public comes forward on one, they're going to have the same comments on the other, because they're just two, four lots away. Can we?
I would, that would be fine with me.
Obviously, each petition has to have its own motions and vote, but the presentation and public comment, can they be combined? Okay.
Okay, so plat vacation twenty-two oh-three oh-three. This would be a vacation of approximately zero point one-nine acres. As you stated, this is about four lots north. This is also located off of Neptide Drive in Harbor Heights. Here's the aerial location map, mid-range location map. This is the one thousand foot buffer map, future land use map designation, again, of low-density residential, and zoning RSF three point five, and the proposed changes, and those changes overlaid onto the aerial. So these lots here are the ones that have already been vacated. This map was created prior to that vacation being done. And so these are the next two up. So with that, staff would be happy to answer any questions.
Sean, what was the original purpose of that property we're vacating?
This is an under-dredged canal. We've got numerous under-dredged canals, as well as numerous over-dredged canals. If you go back into the history books of this area, as you can see, these canals kind of coming up short. These were starting to be dug right around the time that the environmental protection laws came into place, and so they just stopped digging, because a lot of these areas are wetlands. The county has no plans to go in and widen any of these at any time. But essentially, all it was, was they got stopped before they could finish putting in the infrastructure and digging out the canal.
Would they, if the citizens wanted to dredge that, would it have to be through MSBU funds, or does it count?
Either MSBU. They could privately dredge outside of their property lines. Know a few people that have property out here. During a high tide, if you've got a shallow enough draft, you can get out. But this is pretty much flats, kayaks, that sort of type of boat.
I noticed there was very few seawalls, but I did see one. So they could permit a seawall and bring that back out. And what does that determine, the mean-high water line for where it can go?
The mean-high water line is just that, wherever the mean-high is. This is extensively banked. This, this drops off, and so the mean-high would be determined at the time of any permitting. Typically, what you would find is more of a retaining wall inland, even though it's still within the platted canal basin. It would be inland, and then nature would take its course, and it would then become seawall.
Sean, can I ask? We've done several of these over the last two months, two or three months. Is the county in a position to go ahead and vacate the property around, in that, in that same area, as, around the basin, to enhance that? Is that in the county's purview, to be able to do that?
That would not be something, we've been asked about this even by commissioners over the years. Not everyone wants it. Not everyone would. Each fact pattern has to stand on its own. So vacating somewhere else, I can't scroll here because it's not GIS, may deprive public access to water. These are, this area of the basin is completely lot-locked, if you will. I won't say landlocked, because there's no, further down, there's a public right-of-way that goes down to the water, whereby people could go down that and walk along the banks. It goes water before it gets up to here. Everything else around it is lot-locked, so the general public would not be able to access it without trespassing. So again, every, every property kind of has its own fact pattern as to whether it would meet the requirements for vacations or not.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask a question. Sean, does it increase their land? Does it increase their taxes?
Um, yes, I believe it would.
That's probably-
Depends on the appraisal.
Yeah. That's not our purview, but typically more land, but that's not one of our criteria.
And if they're homesteaded, is it at the current values of that piece of whatever the current market is, or is there some kind of tie-in to their homestead?
That I, I have no idea, honestly. Sorry.
And Sean, I see that there's an easement going back to the county on these.
Yes, sir.
Is that so that the county, if they need to get in and do drainage and so forth, they still-
Correct.
-have the ability?
Yep.
But that prevents the public from going down there if they could get to it? You said they can't.
Correct. An easement is solely for whatever purpose the easement, maintenance operation versus it being the actual undredged land. So this would go on to, this would now become this property, and I'm using this one because it shows the ones next to it. This now becomes this property owner's land. We, as the county, have an easement, but solely for maintenance and operations if we need to go mow, clear, whatever, but they still own that underlying land.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is that considered wetland, being it drops off quite a bit? I know.
Wetlands, that would be classified at the time of permitting, because there's a number of factors that go into determining a wetland, not just dropping off, but the soils, the plant materials, anything else like that. If this were to be classified, it would have to be done by an environmental study. As of right now, it's just undredged canal. Honestly, pretty much everything in Charlotte County is swampland. If you recall, we were, we were all swampland that was dredged and filled in in order to create buildable home lots.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. The applicant, or the representatives, any representatives?
I believe a property owner and a representative for one of the other property owners is here as well.
Okay.
Good afternoon. Tyler Canfield, I'm the property owner of the current one on the picture there. And any questions that I can answer, I'll do my best.
Okay. So you're just accepting the staff's, you're accepting the staff's report?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
[laughing].
Good afternoon, Tyler Canfield, I'm the property owner of the current one on the picture there. And any questions that I can answer, I'll do my best.
Okay. So you're just accepting the staff's?
Yes.
You're accepting the staff's report?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Rob Burnson, Big W, on behalf of the second applicant, and we join in the staff report. I would point out, there's actually a benefit because there currently is not a canal maintenance easement along the edge of there, and this is being provided. So the county's actually getting a benefit that it otherwise didn't have. So we would respectfully request your approval.
Does the board have any questions for any of them? Okay. So we'll open up the public comment for both of these petitions. So if you have any comments, please come forward.
Mr. Chairman, move to close public comment.
Second.
I have a motion to second to close public comment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, public comment is closed. Okay, these are two separate petitions. We have seen the right adjacent, or with just a little bit of property in between, but we have to make separate votes on each one of these.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to forward application SV dash two-two dash zero-three dash zero-two to the Board of County Commissioners with the recommendation of approval based on the findings and analysis in the staff memo dated June first, 2022, Charlotte County's comprehensive plan and the evidence and testimony presented at the public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Board.
I'll second that.
I have a motion to second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next motion, please.
Next motion. A motion to forward application SV dash two-two dash zero-three dash zero-three to the Board of County Commissioners with the recommendation of approval based on the findings and analysis in the staff memo dated June first, 2022, Charlotte County's comprehensive plan and evidence and testimony presented at the public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Board.
I'll second that.
I have a motion to second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number seven, please.
Good afternoon. For the record, JSHL Community Development Department, Port Charlotte Apartments Residency LLC is requesting application 22LID 00000 and 00001. And the proposed amendment, actually, this application is scheduled to be presented to the Board of County Commissioners on July 12th for its adoption hearing. And the proposed amendment to amend the development order for the Sand Hill DRI by revising the build-out date to reflect the extension of the build-out date of this development order per the governor's executive orders. So the new build-out date is now February 19, 2026. And also, this is Sand Hill DRI, which is located within Commission District One. And second changes is to incorporate the terms of a local government development agreement containing commitments from NGI acquisitions LLC as owner of parcel C19B and R2 Track Four of the Sand Hill DRI to provide a prop share payment to ensure transportation concurrency on Sand Hill Boulevard from Kings Highway to Deep Creek Boulevard for development of 31.28 acres located on Sand Hill Boulevard. So you can see, this is general location of Sand Hill DRI, which contains 721 acres. And this is specific sites is related to the development agreement. So that site is a subject property for that development agreement. So development agreement between the property owners and the Charlotte County is specifically related to development on this parcel. And site is part of Economic Center on the 2050 framework map, and the property is designated as DRI mixed-use on the 2030 future land use map, and with planned development zoning. So April 26, the Board of County Commissioners approved the resolution number 2020 dash 034 to allow for 270 multifamily units on the subject property. And the DRI development order states that impacts to the Sand Hill segment will require the Sand Hill segment to be widened to two lanes from two lanes. So development agreement was entered on the same day, which is April 26, 2022, by and between NGI acquisitions LLC and Charlotte County to address necessary commitments to ensure concurrency on Sand Hill segment. So also, as required by Section I, Condition 12E3 of this development order, the property owner, which is Port Charlotte Apartment Residences LLC, submitted this amendment to the Sand Hill DRI development order to incorporate the terms of a local government development agreement, which was entered on April 26, to provide a prop share payment to ensure transportation concurrency on Sand Hill Boulevard from Kings Highway to Deep Creek Boulevard. So I'll be more than happy to answer any questions. It's kind of housekeeping for this petition. So thank you very much.
I do have a question or two. I did take a look at the development order, and I did read it, and I just had some questions about it. I'm trying to understand where the developer's responsibility is in widening Sand Hill Road to four lanes. Where does that actually occur on the property?
What, sorry, can you say it again?
According to the development order, the developer is required to widen Sand Hill Road.
I think they pay the prop share.
Just a share of that. Where does that widening take place on Sand Hill Road?
When?
No, where?
Where, actually, say the segment between, I believe, between Sand Hill, between Kings Highway to Deep Creek Boulevard, that segment.
So all the way from Kings Highway?
Mm-hmm.
So that would dovetail into a newspaper report that I read this morning that says that the county would like to discuss widening Kings Highway to DeSoto County line?
No, sir. Sean Cullen, playing zoning official, I haven't sworn. So two things. On the property, as you can see, this black line here doesn't quite follow the blue line. That curve is being softened, almost around 90 degrees. So there has also been an acquisition of some property here to soften that curve a bit. But the item you heard about in the newspaper today that's going, I believe, tomorrow to the commission meeting, that's that segment just past Kings, the entrance to Kingsway Golf Course, as well as just north of Walmart, where it narrows down into two lanes, but it's really wide area. That area needs to be resurfaced. It's in really, really rough shape. And so instead of resurfacing something that within the next few years is probably going to be torn up and formally widened, the county is proposing to move with widening the rest of that segment to the DeSoto County line instead of just repaving it and having to tear it up again.
So I just want to be clear. So Sand Hill Road, there you go, thank you. Sand Hill Road would be widened from the racetrack complex and the 711 complex back to Deep Creek Boulevard? Is that the way I am?
Yes. Yes, Kings. So where you see the kind of S-curve coming around here to Deep Creek Boulevard, that is the intent. But the section that you were referencing is?
Is along Kings.
Yeah, the stretch up here, because as you can see, it narrows down, kind of. You can almost look at that, it narrows down right about there. And this stretch is, again, in incredibly rough shape. So we were looking at possibly widening that because it's got to be resurfaced regardless.
Two different issues, one for safety, one for development.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Ms. Waxler.
Good afternoon, Jerry Waxler with the McCory Law Firm, representing Port Charlotte Apartment Residences LLC. I might be able to help clarify what we're talking about here. So already in the county CIP is the widening of Sand Hill Boulevard from two lanes to four lanes from Kings Highway to Deep Creek. When this project came in, this apartment project, came in looking for its site plan approvals, one of the things you do is a traffic study, and one of the things that they were asked to do was look at a traffic study that identified what percentage of the traffic from this development affects that segment of Sand Hill Boulevard. And they entered into what's called a proportionate share agreement, which says that they will contribute their proportionate share of the cost of widening. So they will contribute dollars that are proportional to the amount of their impact to that widening. That agreement is the agreement that was approved in April of 2022. The Sand Hill DRI development order requires that when you enter into an agreement like that relative to segments that are, were considered as being impacted by the Sand Hill DRI, that you have to take the terms of that agreement and incorporate it into the development order. So the development agreement now makes reference to the agreement. The agreement as a whole, the approved recorded agreement is attached and is an exhibit, and that's what you are considering today. We are simply following the dictates of the development order to incorporate an already approved agreement into that development order. With that, I would respectfully request that you recommend approval. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Waxler? Okay. We'll open the public comment. Anyone wishing to speak about this petition, please come forward.
Mr. Chairman, move to close public comment.
Second.
Have a motion to second, close public comment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, public comment is closed. Any discussion on this item? And I'll entertain a motion then.
Mr. Chairman. A motion to forward application two-two LAD dash 00000 dash 00001 to the Board of County Commissioners with the recommendation of approval based on the findings and analysis in the staff report dated May 24, 2022, Charlotte County's comprehensive plan and the evidence and testimony presented at the public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Board.
Second motion.
I have a motion to second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, Michelle, the next items, eight through 16, and board members, they're all the same type of items. I've asked staff and the attorney if we can't have the one overall presentation for it, because it is a county brought forward petitions. We'll have the public comment open in three different sections according to how these petitions are, and every item here has to be voted separately. But the presentation is the same reasoning, the same items. So I've asked that we just have the one presentation. Any objections to that?
Thank you for doing it.
So, Michelle?
Okay. Good afternoon. So I will quick for three sets of presentation. Good, for the record, JSHL Community Development Department, and also my planning expert qualification is attached to staff report as Exhibit One. So staff, on behalf of Board of County Commissioners, is requesting three applications, CSD 22 dash O3, PL 2100001, and Z 2248 and 13. And the first, BCC public hearings for CSD 2203 and the rezoning Z 224813, and the transmitter hearing for large-scale PL 22 dash 00001 is scheduled on July 12, 2022, in July. And the second, BCC public hearing for the CSD and rezoning, and also the adoption hearing for the large-scale plan amendment is scheduled on September 13. So the proposed, three proposed changes, which are to certify sending zones for multiple parcels to 797 density units, and also to amend the Charlotte County Future Land Use Map Series Map Number One, 2030 Future Land Use Map for multi-parcels from low-density residential, LDR, to preservation PR with annotation to the 2030 Future Land Use Map limiting the residential development rights to zero units on all parcels. And third request is to amend the Charlotte County zoning atlas from multi-parcels from residential single-family 3.5 for about 1.6 acres, and agriculture for about 59.9 acres to environmentally sensitive, so ES. And all properties are located within Commission District One. So you can see, this is general location of the subject property, which is located in the P3 preserved area and in the middle and the east county, and also within Commission District One. So you can see the, a little bit hard to look, they have all the different properties for the CSD. CSD, actually, this portion is not part of certified density because this portion is low-density residential and it's ES zoning, but the property is less than 10 acres, so we don't certify any density for that. Technically, for ES, should be one unit per 40 acres if property located outside urban service area, and if inside urban service area, will be one per 10 acres. So you can see, all the property are located outside of urban service area, and this is 2050 framework map, and all the subject properties are designated, this is 2050 framework map, is agriculture and rural. And the parcel, like I mentioned, all these parcels located outside the urban service area and also designated as agriculture and rural, and most of them are platted lots. So, and the majority of parcels have no road access and contain category one wetlands, and the county has obtained these parcels for preservation in perpetuity. So all these parcels are qualified as sending zone. And also, you can see, most of the parcels are located in the coastal highlands area. You can see, I have three maps for the coastal highlands map and three maps for the flood zone area. So basically, the 84 density units are located within tropical storm surge zone of the coastal highlands area. And also, six density units are located within category one of the coastal highlands area, and seven is located outside of coastal highlands area. And you can see, majority of them are located within 8 AE flood zone. So I just want very quickly to show you, actually, there is two located with X FEMA flood zone. So the rest within coastal highlands area, and outside is with 8 AE flood zone. And then this is the existing Future Land Use Map designation, 2030. So these parcels are currently designated as low-density residential, so you can see on the screen, and that's, I mean, it's kind of hard to see. Actually, it's proposed from designation is preservation, so with that annotation to the 2030 Future Land Use Map, limiting the residential development rights to zero units on all these parcels. And this is existing zoning, actually, 1.6 acres of platted lots are zoned residential single-family 3.5, in this area, and there's 59.9 acres are zoned agriculture, so which the rezoning is rezoned all from AG and RS of 3.5 to ES. So the proposed preservation and ES zoning categories are more consistent with the current and proposed use of this property, which is to preserve these properties in perpetuity. So this is the most appropriate land use category and zoning for this property. So it is staff's professional opinion that the proposed changes are consistent with the intent of the county's TDU program and the goals, objectives, and policies set forth in county's comprehensive plan to protect and preserve environmentally sensitive resources within the county. So the proposed amendment should not create any negative impact on surrounding properties. So this is one set of the changes. And the next one, so this one is also change for CSD 2204 and the PL 220002 and the Z 2247 and 14. Also, there are three proposed changes. The first one is also to certify the sending zones for multiple parcels to servants, 36 density units, and also to amend the Charlotte County from Series Map 2030 from multiple parcels from rural state residential for about 170.21 acres, and agriculture 40.99 acres to preservation, and also with that annotation to the Future Land Use Map, limiting the residential development rights to zero units on all these parcels. And there is also a rezoning to rezon from Resident State Five for about 170.21 acres, and agriculture AG 40.99 acres to ES, environmentally sensitive. And all these properties are located within Commission District One. And actually, the property you can see on the screen are generally located within the Perry Creek Park area and in the east county area. So all these properties are located outside of urban service area. So all these properties are located outside the urban service area. So, and this is the framework designation, all the property, properties are designated as agriculture and rural, and you can see all these properties are located outside of coastal high hazard area, you can see on the screen. And this is the Future Land Use Map designation, which majority of them are designated as rural state residential within Perry Creek Park, and also there is four parcels, actually located to the south of that is agriculture, the Future Land Use Map designation is agriculture. So this is a proposed Future Land Use Map designation, change all to preservation, and with an annotation, limiting the residential development rights zero for all these parcels. And this is the zoning, basically have two zoning category, and all majority of the parcels are zoned R E five, and the four parcels are zoned A G. So this is the proposed zoning, which is E S. So like I mentioned before, all this county purchase, actually county purchases these properties, and the properties are used as part of the county's scrub J habitat conservation plan. So basically, all these properties are qualified as sending zone, and also the proposed preservation, Future Land Use Map designation, and the E S zoning, which are the most appropriate land use category and zoning for this property. So this is one, and the last set, the same thing, C S Z twenty-two oh five and large scale P L twenty-one zero three and the rezoning Z twenty-two thirty-nine and fifty, it's the same thing, the first public hearing and transmitter hearing will be on July twelfth, and the adoption hearing and second rezoning public hearing will be on September thirteenth. And also the three changes, first is to certify sending zone for multiple parcels for about fifty point four one acres to servants thirty-four density units, and also to amend the Charlotte County From Series Map, number one twenty thirty, for multiple parcels from rural state residential for fifty-two point two five acres and agriculture A G for about thirty-seven point one five acres to preservation, and also with an annotation to limiting the residential demand rights to zero units for all parcels. And also, there is a rezoning for multiple parcels from agriculture and rural state residential and rural state residential five and rural state residential one, R E one, to environment sensitive. And all these parcels are located in Commission District One, actually generally located in Washington Loop area, and with Commission, Commission District One, so in the eastern county. I tried to point out, you can see on the screen, so you can see the purple one, it's part of the C S Z, because all these parcel, it backed to two thousand and three under the T D R program, the density already certified for the property located in, I can't remember, seven seven six, I, my brain said there is a project, there is a transfer density on that site. So that's why you can see on the screen, the county on, in all the highlighted in yellow, but however, certified density is the purple one that qualify for that. Then this all parcel is located outside the urban service area, and also this is twenty fifty framework map, all the properties are designated as part of agriculture and rural, and all the property is certified, located outside of coastal high hazard area. And this is the Future Land Use Map designation, and you can see a portion of the property is designated as agriculture, and the remaining properties are designated as rural state residential, and also the proposed changes to preservation, you can see on the screen, and this is the zoning designation for all these properties, you can see they have agriculture and have R E five and have R E one, and this is the proposed changes to, yes, zoning district. So these proposed changes consistent with the T D U program, and also consistent with goals, objectives, and policies set forcing the county's comprehensive plan to protect and preserve all this land in perpetuity, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Any questions from the board to staff on any of this?
Yeah, on the environmentally sensitive, you mentioned scrub J, could the county use that for the gopher tortoise relocations as well?
Um, I think it was scrub J habitat, and actually this is a team project, and I believe, Tina-
There's a lot of money to be made there, so, but you-
Tina, were you sworn in?
No. Sorry, I got here late.
You want to be sworn in too, just in case?
Do you solemnly swear the testimony about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please say aye do.
Aye.
Thank you.
Tina Powell, Parks Natural Resources Manager. The majority of these properties aren't big enough. You need forty contiguous acres for it to be classified as a long-term protected recipient site. The one property that could be, which is going to be the one that is, was in the first application, that southernmost one, the current density on site of scrub, of gopher tortoises would preclude it from being permitted at this time.
Okay.
It already has too many tortoises on it.
And I noticed, yeah, too many homes. I noticed that all of these are in District One, and I'm new to the game, but what precluded the county to go out and buy these, like I'm looking at C S Z twenty-two dash oh three over at the Peace River, and just in the subdivision areas, you just randomly grabbed pieces of property? I mean, what, what was, how come it's all just in District One? Is the commissioner wanting to get this done, or?
So the scrub J habitat conservation plan focused on purchasing lands where scrub Jays could survive long-term in perpetuity. It's through a federal permit. The majority of the scrub, remaining scrub habitat in Charlotte County is in District One and eastern Charlotte County. This particular area right here-
Right, that's what I was-
Was, the upland areas are part of the scrub J habitat conservation plan. Some of the more wet areas were part of a settlement with Little Pine Island Mitigation Bank, where the county received a percentage of funds from county projects that were paid into that bank to purchase hydrack and wetland habitats within Charlotte County.
And will these lots, like, that are just kind of sporadically amongst families, just be left to be overgrown? Will the county maintain them? What happens?
We own the majority of those, and we continue to manage them. The county owns many of the lots surrounding these ones.
So the county's taken on just more liability, it looks like, but we, is that required for us to do the scrub J then? Is that part of a requirement that we-
The county chose to get a permit from the federal government, and the terms of that permit are-
Buy in-
For thirty years.
Environmental sensitive areas for the little birds? Hmm, okay.
The, the use of the word chose is, we need to be careful about it, because it's a, you know, it's the Endangered Species Act drives this whole process, so it was a choice.
Understood.
Because of the location of these lots in various locations, there are other owners that surround those properties. So this act that we're going to consider today doesn't impede an existing owner from being able to develop their lot.
No, this only applies to the properties the county purchased.
Okay. And nor does it preclude the development of any roadways into those areas either, is that correct?
No, it's not.
Okay.
Would the T D Us that are going away here, would they be banked and allowed to be put somewhere else, or are we just doing away with all these T D Us?
We just, we just certify the density, and the county will hold all this certificate.
You'll hold a certificate, so they can get those back out again?
Yeah, county owns that certificate, and based on Board of County Commissioner direction, so in the future.
So does the county have a known bank of how many T D Us that we own? I guess-
We have certification. The last one, we did it almost two years ago for the, on seven seven six, I forgot the park, we certified twenty-eight density units. So we have certificate, county owns-
The answer to your question directly is yes. The county will retain them in a bank.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I do have one more question, if you don't mind, I'm sorry. To go back onto your question, as far as maintainability of those sites, and you had mentioned a federal permit, is, is the federal government, do they prescribe what has to be done with those lots, and then, and what timing do they prescribe? For instance, I'm going to refer to a burn, for instance. Is that prescribed by federal law to occur at a certain time? Is there a schedule that's implemented for it to happen?
Prescribed burning is included in the county's habitat conservation plan, and it's not, will take permit from the U S Fish and Wildlife Service. It is not prescribed on a calendar basis. It's based on the condition of the habitat, and that the county managed scrub J habitat to optimal conditions.
So it's inspected regularly?
They, we do an annual report to the service and report how many acres we treat mechanically, how many we burn, and then they do site visits at their determination.
Does this, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Does this tie into the letter that we received last minute, the gentleman with asthmatic conditions and the burn concerns?
Yes. I believe so, yes.
I believe that, that letter was made part of the record.
Is there anything to address that, or is?
Well, maybe I can ask Tina one question. On a prescribed burn, can you talk a little bit about what would preclude the county from burning a property? Like, in other words, if it was adjacent to occupied property or anything like that? Is, is any of that covered in the, in the, in the permit?
So having homes directly adjacent to a property doesn't necessarily preclude it from being burned under a prescribed burn, but any prescribed burning that, that is done, is done by certified, by the state certified prescribed burner. We have three currently on our staff, and every permit has to be approved by the Florida Forestry Service the week prior and the day of prescribed burning. So they are not going to issue permits with conditions that would potentially damage neighboring properties. The county has had a prescribed burn program since approximately two thousand and two.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. I'm going to open up the public comment time for all of this. So when you've come up to speak, try to identify what area you'd be speaking about. So we'll open up public comment to all of this that Ms. Shaw just made a presentation on. So if you have any comments for your area, please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name's Janet Laird. I'm a Prairie Creek Park resident. I'd like to speak about applications, C S Z two-two dash oh four, P L two-two dash zero 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 two, and Z dash two-two dash four-seven dash one-four. I am going to request that you not approve those applications, even though I expect that you will. One reason that I'm going to ask that you not approve them is because I believe I have found some material errors in the applications. All three applications are fairly lengthy. At the next to the last page of each application is a list of lots. I'm going to address those lots, and also perhaps, yes, I'll make reference to that map that's up there. So, the ninth item on the next to the last page, there's an address, five-five-zero-one, Cypress Grove Circle. That parcel, I believe, is on your application, and it's also on the map. It's lot five in block nine. I have no problem with that as part of the application process. Then, there's another lot. It is lot six, one-seven-five-five-one Wood Path. That one, I do not believe is shown on the map. Then there's another item on that same page, one-seven-seven-zero-one Wood Path Court. It is lot seven, I believe it is also not on the map as an identified parcel for this application. And finally, there is another item on the list, one-seven-seven-five-one Wood Path, which is not on the map, and is described as lot six, which means you have two items described as lot six, block nine, in all three of these applications. I believe the error is that it should be lot eight. The parcel number on the lists of the application is identical to the previous lot six-one that I meant. If it is going to be lot eight, it should be a different parcel number, parcel four-zero two-four one-three two-seven six-zero-zero-two. That parcel, lot eight, and the one, lot seven, were both transferred from the same owner to Charlotte County in February this year. I also have concerns about transferring this residential property to preserve environmentally sensitive status because of prescribed burns. Recently in the news, the state of Arizona conducted prescribed burns, and three hundred homes were accidentally burned. It's good that you have a state burner, but things could happen. I also would like to discuss the process of this application. Some of the items I'm going to discuss may be the purview of the legal department or the Board of Commissioners, but I think this board here today could help out. It's primarily a communication issue. I did notice other citizens here today that spoke on other petitions had little pieces of paper in their hands that looked like they were notices that this application process was taking place. I live adjacent to a lot that's been acquired by the county and is on this application, and I received no notification. There was a handwritten sign placed at the head of our entrance to our subdivision, and that, I don't know when it was put there. I found out about this situation by seeing the public notice that was published on May the twenty-ninth in the local paper. That notice seems to have the same map that you have in the applications with some of the omitted properties. I attempted to get information about the application. The notice in the paper said that that information would be available at a website, and it gave the website, and also in the public libraries. When I went to the public libraries, it was not there. So I contacted the county. I did find out that a bunch of county people were on a, some type of seminar or meeting in Orlando for three days, and perhaps that's why this wasn't available. But then later, they told me that information on these zoning hearings is never provided more than one week before the actual zoning meeting, which means that the notice misleads people. I think the notices should be revised to state the date that the information will be available to the public, so that people don't waste other people's times. I have nothing but praise for the Charlotte County library staff, which helped me get this information. There may in fact be other errors in this application that I'm unaware of. I was very limited in time. I actually didn't get the paper applications from the library until this morning, but I had noticed on the staff report, which was finally put up on the agenda online last Tuesday, that there were these discrepancies. My other comment regarding this situation with the scrub J is that the county has missed many opportunities to acquire large parcels that became available that could have been reserved for scrub J habitat. The Ryles Farm Ranch people had a large parcel available. There was a orange grove on Washington Loop that was available. In fact, there's another one right now, and Shell Creek Groves was recently put in pending for like five point one million maybe. The cost per acre of that grove would be around eight thousand bucks, whereas recently, these two lots I mentioned on Wood Path that were sold to the county in February, they sold for approximately sixteen thousand dollars per acre. I'm aware that orange groves are not the best habitat for scrub Jays, that mitigation would have to be done to the land to make it suitable, but I think it would have been a better opportunity and probably safer, at least for the residents that live where I live. So I hope you can do something about the communication issues that I brought up today in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Bradley Teets. I was the one that sent the email on the possibility that I couldn't attend the meeting, but I did want to add a few things. And will what I sent be part of the record, or do I need to read it again?
That, that notice, I think we just stated that that- That, that notice, I think we just stated that that was, that Mr. Teetz, it's going to be part of the record, sir.
Okay, let me just add a few other things then.
Thank you very much.
When we lived in the city for 20 years, when there was a zoning change, anyone within a prescribed area would receive a letter in the mail. All the people I've talked to, and I guess was presented by Janet, nobody received anything. Maybe the county doesn't do that or doesn't have to do that, other than that sign board that was in the, stuck in the ground that didn't give any explanation. In doing more research for this, I see that there was a 2021 Charlotte Sun article about the scrub jay situation, and that it's mentioned a consultant, it didn't say who it was, but the article said that regardless of what Charlotte does with various different options, that perhaps they, the scrub jay would die off anyway, and that it could not be prevented even though their spending, back in 2014, it was going to be $34 million, and with what they're paying for land now, it's probably two or three times that. But if, if the scrub jay do inevitably pass away in Charlotte County, is it part of this plan that all this land will be returned to its previous designation for habitat by humans? And the burning is particularly important because it's so close to residential properties that just in the right wind conditions could do, as Janet said, and cause a lot of either personal damage to property and/or health damage, such as myself who has asthma, that's why I'm so hoarse. But if the state and federal government wants all this done, are they going to pay for it, or why are they not paying for it instead of the taxpayers? And it appears that since the county wants this done, you know, the county-appointed planning board is not going to turn them down, and of course, the county commissioners will not turn themselves down when it comes up in the next couple of months. So it appears that there's no independence on this. But hopefully you folks have the purview to put some stipulations on what the county can and cannot do in that instead of burns on residential neighborhood lots, that they should use mulching, cutting, or whatever other methods are used to protect the land and get it ready for the scrub jays, because we have deer and rabbits and various other wildlife in that neighborhood, and burning habitat that probably is used by the deer and other animals is not good for them because they'll either be killed or lose their habitat and scurry onto our property, and we don't mind the deer, but it just could kill off some of them or put them in danger. So it's certainly a balance, but it's, it's as if everything is just for scrub jays and nothing else seems to matter, including people, because they consider 13 to 20-some acres per scrub jay family as necessary, and that's a lot of land that has to be set aside. So I would hope that you would take all of this into consideration and that the county commissioners would also, because Prairie Creek Park is, was here long before the scrub jay mitigation was fashionable, were required. And it puts our neighborhood in jeopardy to, for them to just come in and buy the land and then turn it into zero, because they're obligated to pay their, their fees, which could very easily be several thousand dollars per lot and for roads and so on in the future by owning properties in the neighborhood. And buying the, the farmland, the cattle land, or the orange groves seem much more wise in the long run, not the short run. So I thank you very much.
I am also a resident, sorry, I, I've got a very hoarse voice this time.
Can you pull that microphone down? That'll help. Thank you.
There we go. The Prairie Creek Park, I noticed that with the environmental sensitive, that you can have trails on there, that you can have people come in and walk on there, and you can have signs on there saying, you know, what it, what it is. We have issues that in August, people come in to pick the sawpalm berries, and we also have rattlesnakes that live in the sawpoms. If the county has somebody coming in and picking their sawpalm berries, are they going to be liable for the people who are bit by the snakes? And when was the last time that someone came in and looked at? Because the property that is right next to me, we sold to the county, and we don't know if anybody has ever been in there to look at it. So I was just wondering, when was the last time someone actually came in there and looked at it? Because we have seven feet from our fence line that is outside our fence line, that's still our property that we keep as a burn. We keep mowed to have it, so it's a burn something.
Fire break.
There we go, thank you.
You're welcome.
So those are just some questions I'd like to throw out there so you have something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on any of these nine petitions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Move to close public comment.
Second. I have a motion, a second, to close public comment. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public comment time is closed. Questions, discussion amongst the board?
Chairman, I have, I have a question, I think for Tina, Ms. Powell, thank you so much. Do you do mitigation on, on land that doesn't have birds and residents?
Specifically for the scrub jay?
Yes.
Yes, we, there are some properties that are within the habitat conservation plan that we are supposed to acquire that are currently not occupied, that we have to do restoration and management of in preparation for birds to be there.
Thank you. That's it, that's my question.
Not for you, I'm sorry. Just a general question. Several of the folks that got to speak testified that they hadn't received any kind of notification. So I'd like some clarity on that. I don't know where their properties are located in proximity to the properties that we're discussing today, but trying to find out how we may have missed them or if they were actually outside of the notification zone.
You are correct. I put on the screen, which is 3-9-10 amendment, so there is mainly notice said if they're not required for applications initiated by Charlotte County for any rezoning initiated by the county. So we don't need to send any notification, but however, we follow 25.66, the notification for ordinance. So we have all the advertisement for all these nine petitions, and with specific location map for these three areas, Peace River Preserve, Perry Creek Park, and also Washington Loop area. So we advertise that and we send to the newspaper, it was published 15 days before this meeting, and we also put the, the sign in front of that area.
I did bring with me a copy of the actual newspaper printout, and I do have that, and it was in the paper on May 29, 2022, and it shows specifically all of those areas. So I just wanted to make sure that there was not some kind of a mistake or something lost in the mail, so to speak.
So they don't do the thousand-foot barrier that you would normally?
We don't, if county initiated.
That ought to be looked at. I don't know what's good for the goose, ought to be good for the gander there. Wow. So they don't, Charlotte County doesn't send it out, but a citizen would have to for a zone, okay.
Sean Cullen, playing zoning official, I have been sworn. The reason for that is because typically the county does very large-scale rezones and plan amendments. The cost to do that would be extremely prohibitive, even this, because of the way the properties are all, even though they're in a geographic park, the notification costs, as well as number of people to notify, would be astronomical. Again, typically when a private citizen is coming in to do an amendment or change a rezon or plan amendment, it's on a singular piece of property, and so it's much more manageable for advertising purposes and mailed notice purposes.
And my comment, as far as the citizens go, I mean, I know the CSZs seem to be more in residential areas. I tend to agree with them that the county ought to be able, like, the preservation, the huge chunks, the 40-acre chunks, should be able to handle scrub jays without going into subdivisions where if we burn, we're going to burn next to people's houses, which admittedly we can do. So yes, my comment would be, I would be against those tiny lots becoming, it seems like a management nightmare for the county, and, and we should move to bigger parcels. So when we vote for these, yeah, let's make sure we do them separately.
You have a response?
I do, I just wanted to provide some clarification. The lots that the county is purchasing through the habitat conservation plans are the specific lots the federal government told us we would need to purchase to meet our mitigation requirements. So purchasing orange groves or agricultural lands don't contain scrub jay habitat, so it's not something that would qualify to meet our permit conditions. Those habitats could theoretically be restored, but on average, the restoration of agricultural lands to scrub habitat runs about $16,000 per acre in addition to whatever that acquisition cost would have been.
Tina, how many acres was acquired so far in Prairie Creek Park? What's the size of those lots generally?
Their individual lots are roughly about five acres. I don't have the specific acreage, I apologize. For the plan as a whole, we've acquired approximately 400 acres to date.
But the ones over by Peace River are smaller than these that you?
Correct. There's various sized properties that we have acquired.
What would be the smallest one that you think you purchased? Would it be less than an acre?
Yes, but just to clarify, the ones over by Peace River were purchased for wetland mitigation, not for scrub jays.
So they won't be burned and used for scrub jays?
No, they're wet. We wouldn't do prescribed burning on them.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I could see value in diversification of having some different lots. Obviously, you know, if some scrub jays got a virus or whatever, I know that the gopher tortoises, I believe do, you'd, you know, have some segmentation there, but it sure seems to make more sense from a management perspective as far as resources and going there and doing things for the county that if they could cluster a little better, that certainly, I'm, I'm very surprised at the way that is, yes, so.
Unfortunately, it's the only habitat left, and for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to issue our permit, they prescribed the areas where we had to purchase land, and this is the only viable scrub jay habitat that could even be combined to make larger parcels. The basis of our plan is two existing preserves, Prairie Creek Preserve and Shell Creek Preserve, as well as the Peace River Preserve area. The northern portion of that is dry and scrubby, and so the design of the Washington Loop parcels, as well as these, is to essentially create a genetic stepping stone for the birds as more development pressure happens in the Deep Creek Harbor Heights area, that they can eventually move over to these long-term preservation areas. But they are poor flyers, and they have very specific habitat requirements. You can't put them in pine flatwoods or wetlands, they, they don't survive. So unfortunately, they are a very habitat-specific bird, and to comply with the Endangered Species Act, the service told us what areas we needed to acquire.
And Tina, these are all voluntary acquisitions, right?
Correct. Everything is done through a willing seller program.
Does the county, what does that mean, Tom? They come, does the county solicit them or for that and then?
I don't know, do we?
Real estate service, I believe, at the beginning, reached out to property owners in the area where we were looking to acquire, to see if anyone was interested in selling, but I know we purchased a property just that was listed on the MLS open market.
And Tom, just in the event it failed, this motion, what would the county do with that property?
In case the scrub jay plan failed? In other words?
Or these amendments, say they all got rejected, what would happen?
Rejected? I'm not trying to understand, these have already been acquired by the county.
Right, but these are zoning or?
If the county did not rezone them, they would stay in their current zoning, but they would essentially be, these are, these have been protected, these are permanently protected. So the only time that it would change is if somehow the species was delisted.
And that would require an amendment to our permit?
Yeah.
Through the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service.
And then you would start a cascade of things would have to happen from there. I'm not, I haven't played that out in my, my head, so I don't know what the answer to that question is, but it's, it's high, it seems unlikely that that would happen anytime soon.
So just a point of clarification, if the rezoning were to fail, we would continue what we're doing now, which is to manage it.
The primary purpose was this, to make sure that they were, that we, the density was removed, because it's, that's not where the county wants to have construction anyway. But the other thing is that they want to keep it in environmental protection forever so that, which is better for our permit status.
And just to provide a little additional background information, because the habitat conservation plan is a very complicated 30-year permit, the plan requires us to manage these properties in perpetuity. So even if the species were to decline and no longer be present on the properties without an amendment to that permit approved by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, they would never revert to anything. They would continue to be conservation lands with or without scrub jays unless the federal government chose to change our permit. Additionally, particularly in the Prairie Creek area, not necessarily the Washington Loop area, because this is a private community, we will not be installing any trails, there will be no public access to these properties, they are just going to be maintained and managed for the species.
Mr. Chairman, one other question.
Yes.
In the event that there was a controlled burn and it did get out of hand and multiple residential properties were lost, how is the county situated to handle that? Insurance?
The county is subject to liability for any kind of negligence, just as any other entity would be.
Right, but is there a policy that we have, or is this just going the backs of the taxpayers?
Well, everything goes on the backs of the taxpayers, because the taxpayers are the ones that pay for the, for the government, so yeah. But no, I, I mean, I can't speak for how the, how the burns are handled, but obviously from the risk management perspective, you know, the county would not want to see a burn that was anything other than highly controlled, protect, you know, this, this is not something that is done next to somebody's house without thinking about it very carefully. So I don't know the answer to that question, exactly, you know, what we're doing on our risk management as far as that goes, but the county would be liable if there was a, if there was a mistake made. Could have liability, I should say.
I don't want to speak to the laws or liability, because I'm not a lawyer, but I do know within the state statutes that govern prescribed burning, there are some specific liability-related stuff included in that. What those mean for the county specifically, I don't want to speak to, but I do know that on the state level, that is addressed, because prescribed burning is used throughout the entire state of Florida.
And so, Tom, not to belabor this, but just to be clear, these resolutions and amendments that we're considering, if they were voted down by, say, the commissioners, the property that we've already bought, you're saying this property has already been stripped of its TDUs and designation?
Has not been, they've not been stripped yet. That, this is what the process we're going through right now, is to, to remove the density units and to, and to place them in preservation.
So then my point is, if they did fail, this could become property the county owns, and we're selling back eventually like Westport or what?
No, because it's already been dedicated in perpetuity to the permit.
If you can't be sold?
So this is really house cleaning, this is what we're doing here.
Okay.
We're making sure that the, that the zoning designation and land use designations match the, and the, and the density matches what the, the use of the property is.
And then for, for your benefit, when you change your zoning and your land use to preservation, you lose your density. So if you don't create a sending zone and take it away before you do that change, you've lost the density. And since the county is capped, you, you're losing density.
Understood.
So you're just, which is great that the county is retrieving it before they zero it out by the change of the land use and the zoning.
Mr. Chairman, a question and a comment. This, this action today, this is not all the scrub jay land that the county owns?
No, nor is it all the land we are going to acquire.
Okay. Yeah, any, could you give me an idea what the percentage is at this point?
Of what we've acquired for the HCP? We've acquired?
Or how this, how, what's today's action fits into the total picture?
So as part of the county's habitat conservation plan, we have to acquire approximately 1,300 acres. To date, we've acquired approximately 400. So we still have an additional 900 and so acres to acquire over the course of our 30-year permit.
And, and this is a small percentage of that number?
Right.
And the counties, you're going to see more of these over time, because the idea is that we want to stay up with the, you know, with our permitted acreage, you know, so there's going to be more of this happening, right? So.
And that 1,300 acre? And that 1,300 acres you're going to acquire all has TDUs or transfer density available?
It really depends on what, where it's situated, you know?
That's a J question.
It's dependent case by case.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Does the board have any other questions, or any other discussion? I think some of the items brought up by the public, the burning and the scrub jays, those are good items that have been brought up. They are now before the staff as concerns, and what the board has brought up as concerns. But as the attorney said, this is more of a housekeeping steps to be in compliance with the habitat permit from the Fish and Wildlife. So now we have nine items here to go through, and they're all in your district, so... You ready?
Yeah, I'm ready. We want to handle this, all nine of them have to be read individually, am I correct? One at a time for the record? Okay, then, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make several motions then.
You're going to make nine motions?
Yeah. Let's start with number eight, a motion to forward application CSZ-22-03 to the Board of County Commissioners with the recommendation of approval to certify sending zones for multiple parcels based on the findings and analysis in the staff report dated May 20, 2022, Charlotte County's comprehensive plan and evidence presented at the public hearing held by the Planning and Zoning Board.
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to the motion, say nay. Okay, so that goes forward.
Item number nine, a motion to forward application PAL-22-00001 to the Board of County Commissioners with the recommendation of approval of transmittal of application PAL-22-00001 to the Department of Economic Opportunity and other state review agencies for review and comment based on the findings and analysis in the staff report dated May 20, 2022, Charlotte County's comprehensive plan and the evidence and testimony presented at the public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Board.
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed to the motion, say nay. And it goes forward.
Item number 10, a motion to forward application Z-22-48-13 to the Board of County Commissioners with the recommendation of approval based on the findings and analysis in the staff report dated May 20, 2022, Charlotte County's comprehensive plan and the evidence and testimony presented at the public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Board.
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Yeah, it goes forward.
Item number 11, a motion to forward application CSZ-22-04 to the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation of approval to certify sending zones for multiple parcels based on the findings and analysis in the staff report dated May 20, 2022, Charlotte County's comprehensive plan and the evidence presented at the public hearing held by the Planning and Zoning Board.
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And it goes forward.
Item number 12, a motion to forward application PAL-22-00002 to the Board of County Commissioners with the recommendation of approval of transmittal of application PAL-22-00002 to the Department of Economic Opportunity and other state review agencies for review and comment based on the findings and analysis in the staff report dated May 20, 2022, Charlotte County's comprehensive plan and the evidence and testimony presented at the public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Board.
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays, anyone's opposed, say nay. And that goes forward.
Item 13, a motion to forward application Z-22-47-14 to the Board of County Commissioners with the recommendation of approval based on the findings and analysis in the staff report dated May 20, 2022, Charlotte County's comprehensive plan and evidence and testimony presented at the public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Board.
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. And that goes forward.
Item 14, a motion to forward application CSZ-22-05 to the Board of County Commissioners with the recommendation of approval to certify sending zones for multiple parcels based on the findings and analysis in the staff report dated May 20, 2022, Charlotte County's comprehensive plan and evidence presented at the public hearing by the Planning and Zoning Board.
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And that goes forward.
Item 15, a motion to forward application PAL-22-00003 to the Board of County Commissioners with the recommendation of approval of transmittal of application PAL-22-0002 to the Department of Economic Opportunity and other state...
03.
Say, I thought it says 221, the recommendation, so, sorry, let me go back and correct myself. I'll state it again. A motion to forward application PAL-22-00003 to the Board of County Commissioners with the recommendation of approval of transmittal of application PAL-22-00003 to the Department of Economic Development and other state review agencies for review and comment based on the findings and analysis in the staff report dated May 20, 2022, Charlotte County's comprehensive plan and evidence and testimony presented at the public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Board.
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay.
Okay.
And that goes forward.
Finally, item number 16, a motion to forward application Z-22-39-15 to the Board of County Commissioners with the recommendation of approval based on the findings and analysis in the staff report dated May 20, 2022, Charlotte County's comprehensive plan and the evidence and testimony presented at the public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Board.
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion, or any discussion of the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And that goes forward. Any other things from the staff?
Mr. Chairman, before you gobble that, I would like to sort of be our consensus that we recommend strongly to staff and county commissioners that prescribed burns on these properties be the last resort, and that mechanical devices should be used, regardless of the differential cost.
Mr. Chair, just one last thing. We have made some changes to the ex parte communications form. I don't know if you had a chance to see that, but Heather has them. In case you have ex parte communications, we've made them a little bit more precise and followed kind of best practices. So if you have any questions like that, she has them, she can email them to you. That's in case somebody contacts you outside of a hearing, and we request that if someone approaches you on an application and asks you to take a position one way or the other, that you do your best to get the name and be able to, the substance of the communications, and to put that into the record, so that anybody who has a question about that can raise it at a hearing. Okay?
Heather?
And we've made specific forms for this board.
Can you forward that form to everybody, just so we can see what it is, and it'll probably make us think about it a little bit. Okay, anything else from the staff?
One other thing, Mr. Chairman, I will not be in attendance for next month's meeting.
You will not be here for July?
I'll be traveling for most of the month.
Okay. Mark that on your calendar, Heather, okay? Anything else? And we'll pass, what you've said about burn permits have been passed on to the staff. Okay, then we are adjourned.